Welcome to the Biloxi City Council meeting called on Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Moved by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
To our policy agenda, we're adding four double A resolution to declare a state of an emergency, and we're removing items D and E, subject to call.
Motion by George Lawrence to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Paul Tisdale, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, your report.
No report. We'll get to the meat of the business after. No, no report.
Councilman Tisdale, well, I'm sorry, Frank Bordeaux.
No, this will be toward, I think we're gonna do it in a regular meeting. He's running late. And so we're gonna put that report till later in the meeting.
This, this is, okay, we'll move it to later in the meeting, but this is the only meeting we're having today.
Okay.
We've combined the special, the...
Okay, so it's one meeting.
Yes, sir. So if you, you wanna revisit your...
He would, he would defer, he, he gave us note that he'd be a little bit late, so to the latter part of the meeting, we'd defer my report and bring him up.
We'll acknowledge.
We can suspend the rules and allow him a moment when we get to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just acknowledge him when he gets here, if that's, I mean, he's just giving a, a report, right?
That's just a report, not gonna be voted on.
There's no action needed.
No action. That's correct. That's correct.
Then I will move to, we'll move forward to the council reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note that the Ward Five meeting scheduled for tonight has been canceled. It will be rescheduled in the near future. The second, second observation is the city's GIS website is maintained by the Engineering Department, and they've updated it recently. It's, it's really neat. They've done a very good job. I wanted to mention them. And also mention the public work crews hustling in the heat the past few weeks and today hustling with the hurricane prep and cleaning all the drains. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence?
All we gotta do is say a few more prayers and let it go either west or break east quick. I mean, I figure it's gonna still go to the Louisiana line. No matter what they say, it's still not, it's not moving away. It's not coming into Gulfport. It'll go here on the other side of the Mississippi. It'll be all right, but you still gotta prepare and be ready for it. So good thing. So that's Nash Rivers' report from WDSUV, Channel Six in New Orleans, from nineteen fifty-two. Talk to y'all later.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence.
That's it.
Councilman Barrett?
No report.
Councilman Gines?
No report.
Councilman Glavin?
Same thing. Our prayers are with everyone. We, we kinda are trying to get behind this COVID thing and through this COVID thing, and now here we are facing this storm. But, you know, everybody please know that we got the most experience to deal with this thing. We'll deal with it, and we'll get everything cleaned up and ready, ready to keep going on.
Thank you, Councilman Glavin. Excuse me. And within all of your prayers, I hope we not only keep our families safe from COVID and the storm, but when we watch what's going on across the nation, we saw these two officers, two sheriffs in Los Angeles ambushed and shot point blank last night with onlookers looking on. It reminded me of, of some of our fallen officers, and I hope we just keep their families in prayers as well. That'll conclude my report, and we'll move to the citizens' comments. If there's anybody in the audience that would care to speak, we have forty-five minutes allotted, three minutes per person. When you come to the front, please state your name and address and sign in for me. If there's anybody on the, the left-hand side of the room, my left-hand side of the room, your right-hand side of the room, that would care to speak, please come forward. If there's anybody on the right-hand side of the room, or your left-hand side of the room, please come forward. If there's anyone in the back of the room that would care to speak. There being none, we'll move to the policy agenda. Lucy, would you read ordinance A, please?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for property identified as one-two-six-four-eight Lorraine Road.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll move it.
We got a motion by Nathan Barrett, a second by Felix Gines. This was a first reading, so we'll move to Resolution B.
Resolution declaring a state of emergency for Tropical Storm Sally.
I moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Kenny Glavin and a second by Paul Tisdale. Mr. Glavin, do you have any discussion?
Do not.
Councilman Tisdale?
Not a thing.
Any discussion on the rest of the council?
Just, this is a tax for the schools and everything. I, I need to look at that. Is the same as it was last year? Nothing changed? So everything is leveled the same way as it was in twenty nineteen.
What are we talking about?
State of emergency.
This isn't consent.
No, we've faced that.
We're not on consent yet, George.
Second.
We're, we're talking about the state of emergency. This would be your four A, or your...
Double A.
I don't know. No question there.
You have a motion and a second.
Did we vote on B?
Didn't we vote down already? At double A is what we're looking at.
Double A.
Four doubling.
Double A is not on your screen.
Oh, double A, gotcha.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I got the one.
I guess double A comes before single A?
After.
Single A was the ordinance that we...
We just voted on that.
Right, okay, so double A is not on the screen. This is confusing me, because I gotta start using paper. Take this away from me. I try to use technology. So we are discussing four AA. If you look at your additions...
That's good. I got it. I got the new one.
Any discussion on that?
None.
Okay, the state of emergency resolution, all in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move to Resolution B, which is...
Resolution affixing the tax levy for the current year.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
We got a motion by Kenny Glavin, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Discussion, Mr. Glavin?
Well, I'll go ahead and, Councilman Lawrence, you had a question. Go ahead, Councilman Lawrence, I'll defer to your question.
Yeah, I was just, I was trying to pull it up. Is, is everything identical? Has anything changed at any levels anywhere? The school system?
Or the county. It's all the same. There was not, no change.
No change.
No change.
No, no change to school.
Everything's same.
So everything's the same? Because I hadn't seen that until today to see what's on here. I just wanted to make sure it's identical to what it was last year. No add, no plus, no net, anything adjusted at all? Debt-free, and the bonds are saying one point five. We haven't changed anything at all.
They're all the same as twenty twenty.
Well, it was my question. That's it.
Councilman Tisdale?
Kenny, did you have anything? No. I have no comment. Thank you.
Councilman Gines, Councilman Barrett? All in favor of Resolution B? Motion carries five to one, deming against. Resolution C?
Resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-one municipal budget.
I'm second.
Got a motion by Kenny Glavin, seconded by Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Glavin, discussion?
Yeah, as in past discussion and workshops on our budget, I just want to make it clear that this is a budget that we're adopting. We are anticipating revenues and expenses in this kind of turbulent time. And if we fall short of those expenses, we have to adjust, or for short of the revenues, we have to adjust the expenses. Most notably on, on some of the non-departmental that should be adjusted if we don't have the revenues coming in, satisfy those budgetary items as well as others. So I just wanted to make that emphasis as we adopt the budget. That's all I have.
Councilman Tisdale? Councilman Lawrence?
We're gonna have a copy of that this evening, of the budget that you put on the table.
That's it. It's on the back.
Yeah, it's, it's with...
I mean, a full budget, everything listed, everything like that. And what Kenny said, that happens every year. If you don't have the money, you can't pay anything. That's no begging. If we have the money to pay for our stuff, we do it. Non-departmental, fire trucks, whatever. If you have the money, you do it. If you don't have the money, I'm like, Kenny anticipated, it'd be fine. We'd have no problem. But I'd just like to have a full copy of it. I know it's all kind of chomped and everybody quick today. Monday, I'd have been up here getting all this stuff done today. But we hear money voting, so it's a little different. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, you're aware that Tate Reeves signed an executive order extending the city's requirements to oblige by the budget requirements until the twenty-fifth of September, correct?
Yes. We're, we're, we're aware of that, and unlike some of the other cities on the coast here, we had our public hearing early. So we've passed all the wickets. In order to be able to adopt the budget today, we don't need, we don't need to wait.
The extension is not...
Well, I'm not...
The extension's not necessary for us.
I'm not suggesting it's necessary. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that it's available. That's all. In light of Mr. Lawrence's concerns that he wasn't able to get what he needed by today because of the, the rescheduling of our regular scheduled meeting for tomorrow up to today, so that was just something I was putting on the table. Councilman Glavin?
Nothing.
Councilman Gines? Councilman Barrett?
I have nothing other than, you know, to echo what Kenny said. You know, with everything going on, we, we, this is all projections, so at some point, we may have to make modifications depending on how things go, but...
I will assure you, Councilman, we've had the brakes on now for about three months, and we haven't taken our foot off the brake yet, so we'll, we'll look real hard. We've just gotten the gaming numbers in the last few minutes, and, and for the last period. And they're good, but not, not at the budget level, so...
Well, you know, our whole exercise was predict cash and predict any cash a year from now. And so, as always, we, we, we make adjustments in both, you know, with budget amendments as well as just seeing if we can defer expense, and that's why we've been successful the last four, five years in, in outperforming the budget that we guessed in, in September, October one. So that'll be, that'll be the same course of action. If there's some things extraordinary, we'll need, you know, your support and guidance on how we address it, so...
Can you share the gaming numbers with us? I know you just said that they were okay, but they weren't what we projected them to be.
I think from the general fund, we had projected a year ago, one point six million. I think it's one point four-three-eight. And we had projected, with Diana here, we projected about one point four-five in assuming the beginning balance of this year, of, of the ten-one. But there are other things, so, that it's still in the ninety percentile of what we anticipated four months ago.
So those numbers are for when August numbers?
What we were, yeah, the August business that we receive in September will be the last gaming revenue part of our beginning balance. So you see that three point two-four billions? So if you were to take it literally, we may be a hundred thousand or so off of that figure.
So, but we originally, last year before we...
Originally last year, we...
One point six is what we were projecting.
Exactly. One point six million, yeah. And let me just keep in mind that, you know, in March and in April, especially when we had no gaming revenue, which it was one point eight million go out the door at that particular month. We projected seventy-five percent of, you know, in May, June, July, and all the way through September. And we've, you know, the gaming numbers have been consecutively, I think, seventy, eighty-one percent and ninety-something percent, and this is ninety-something percent of those last three months.
So you said that was one point four-five, and we projected one point six?
A year ago, one point six, but we...
That's good. I mean, that's, that's good in the end, I meant with the...
And when we did the adjustment for the projection, it was like one point three. So we outperformed that secondary adjustment.
Is there any further discussion on the council regarding the, regarding Resolution C, adopting the fiscal budget twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries five-one, deming in opposition. We will move to Resolution D.
D and E were removed.
We will move to Resolution F. Yeah?
Wait a minute. What one? Yeah, I don't know. I don't have an F on my resume.
F was replaced with AA.
All move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
I'll second it.
I'm gonna go with that was Lawrence moving it, and Gines, second. Mr. Lawrence, do you have any discussion?
I just wanted to...
There's a guy, there's a guy from Gulfport here.
There's a, one moment, just take a moment from the consent agenda to acknowledge the guy from Gulfport. He's, he's driven a long ways to be here. Let's...
On H.
Hold on, George.
We'll let Frank speak.
Let's, let's let Mr. Bordeaux give us the presentation since he's made it here.
This is costing money. You don't want him in here. This'll cost money.
Okay. If you turn to page three in the proposal, this is your all lines aggregate. This renews on October one. And as we talked about in the budget meetings, we anticipated an increase, and we did get an increase. But worse than the increase is on our law enforcement liability. We previously had no aggregate, and they are putting an aggregate of three point four million, which is still greater than most municipalities and counties across the state. But it is, that is something that is of concern. That has nothing to do with the city of Biloxi. The rate increase has nothing to do with the city of Biloxi. It has to do with the, the marketplace. And obviously, law enforcement liability has taken some pretty big hits over the past several months nationally. And so your workers' comp is renewing now. That is flat renewal. And then your whole policy for your vessels has a decrease from last year. And that is, we got rid of a Boston Whaler and two engines, and so that was the reason for the decrease. We have a lot of claims information in here that we've normally provide you all. We have a deeper dive claims review that we do with the administration and the insurance committee, and that normally is in the spring. And so we'll provide that as well in the spring at that time.
Does anybody have any questions? Paul, you moved your seat.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. I didn't give you a...
Well, no, 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 you...
Looking on with Mike, just a question, Frank. So is the, the cost for insurance up, down, the same? It sounds like it's going up, and how much is it?
Your all lines aggregate has an increase of about sixty thousand dollars. Your whole policy has a decrease that is, it's roughly a six thousand dollar decrease. And then your workers' comp is flat over last year.
All right, so that's an increase of sixty, a decrease of?
Six.
Six hundred.
It's about a fifty-four thousand dollar increase for your all lines aggregate, your workers' comp, and your whole policy.
Over what we're paying this year?
Yes, sir.
A half million?
I'm sorry?
Did you say it's a half million dollar increase?
No, sir. Fifty-four thousand.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Yes, sir.
Started to get complicated there. Thank you.
Councilman Lawrence?
On the wind insurance, is that something we, we forced to carry from FEMA and MEMA? Do we, how many claims we ever had on wind?
How many claims have you had on your...
Fifteen years, nine.
Property coverage. We had a small claim on the Oro Keefe since Katrina. Other than that, I can't think of... We've probably had a few flood claims, but this is not, this is not renewing your wind insurance. That comes in the spring. This is just your liability coverages.
You want me to premium three hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was looking for. Trying to save money in all the town. Any chance I get.
It's an extremely, extremely tough market in, in property this coming year. I mean, we will definitely have to get very creative on property insurance.
So I mean, we did the best we can with all the, I know you tried a lot of different companies. Anything changed? Pretty much stay with the same companies?
No, no, sir. I mean, we're having to, for property insurance on all of our accounts, we're having to reorganize all of our... We're gonna go, this year, I can see us going back to having twenty-seven, twenty-eight different carriers on our program. I think, you know, after Katrina, well, six years ago, we had about twenty-eight carriers on our program. We're down to, I think, fifteen. I think that in order to, every carrier is cutting capacity. And so we're definitely gonna have to market this very, very hard this year.
That's a private insurance company. They just wanna take in money. They don't wanna pay any out. And I know we're having a hard time trying to find somebody, even to bid on half these, these claims that we have, and I tell them, so... It's not getting any better, and they just said it go up, and you don't have a whole lot of control over that. I don't care how good of a jobs the city's done, which we've done a good job on this program with the property and everything. Still, it's been just tough. They just, council goes up.
We, on the property and casualty program over the past six years, we've cut several million dollars out of the premium over the past several years.
Councilman Glavin?
So, so if I'm reading this report right, over the last two years, we went up, what, forty thousand last year was the increase, and then sixty-something thousand this year. So over the last two years, our premiums have increased a hundred...
Yes, sir.
Thousand dollars.
On the all lines aggregate, yes, sir. And, um, part of it is a shock loss that we had in, I believe, twenty seventeen was the issue after Mardi Gras. And then the other part of it is just what's going on with the, the global insurance market, primarily in law enforcement liability and public officials' liability.
All right, hopefully it's not gonna keep going up. Hopefully it'll stabilize at this point.
There are other markets that are entertaining coming into Mississippi for public entities, for your casualty. Liberty Mutual is, Safety National is, and so, you know, obviously with more carriers on, coming into the market from the casualty standpoint, more competition, and I could see a stabilization on the casualty. I don't, I do not see a stabilization on the property insurance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Barrett? Thank you, Mr. Bordeaux, for coming in. We appreciate you coming all the way across the side of the beach, outside of the gaze.
I was in the kill first thing this morning, so...
Thank you again.
Thank you all.
All right, one thing, one thing, it's worth pointing out, on page eight of the document he gave you, I noticed that Mr. Bordeaux talked about the fact that our, our insurance for workmen's comp was flat, no, no decrease, no increase. That's in spite of the fact that we've had fewer claims, and the claims have been smaller over the last four or five years. So the city, I think, is, is doing everything it can to keep our insurance costs down. So their, the insurance costs are not being, going up because of accidents that we're having. It's just the, the business is getting more expensive. I think it's important to, to, to see that metric in terms of the number, number of claims and the, and the size of the claims. So we're, we're doing a pretty good job there, but in spite of that, insurance, the cost of insurance is going up. And when, when Frank talks about us getting creative in the spring on our property insurance, the only way I know to get creative is to simply take more buildings and equipment off the, off the list. Ensure, self-insure more, more things, and that's something we're probably gonna have to do. That's a, a battle to be fought in the spring.
Well, we look forward to that fight, Mike. Would that be all?
That'd be all, sir.
All right, we'll move, we'll return to the consent agenda. Councilman Lawrence, you have the floor.
Yeah, with, on H. When, and all these deputy clerks and that. Are these just people that's working in, are you just gonna have them sign papers, or we have to pay all these people? On H.
A?
H.
L, H. Do we have to, you're saying, do you have to sign anything? The declaration of emergency, the mayor will sign the declaration of emergencies, and the council president will sign it?
It's, it's five Js. That was my mistake. I said H. H was the emergency thing from last time. This is J about appointing all these deputy clerks. Five J.
Got, got it. Peter, you wanna answer why we have to appoint deputy clerks?
This is something, different people that work under David Leckich is, is to allow them to be able to notarize and swear out an affidavit that an officer may be doing. So I would assume this is just somebody new in that office, that they're just giving them that authority to notarize or, or take the swearing in of that officer on tickets.
What kind of expenses that to this program?
It doesn't cost anything.
Anything, it don't cost anything? Can we just put a ton of money in this program? We just started losing money in it anyway. So I was just wondering, we had to pay all these people, say, hey, we're gonna lose some more money?
No, we just give them authority to, to take the oath from the officer.
Okay. And, what about P? Peter? P on this Main Street thing, what is this one? On a tri-party agreement?
I think we're just extending the time for that grant a month or two because of the delay of moving the house. There was a delay because of division. This house is being moved off of, near the intersection, right near the interstate. And I think we had a deadline for him to do it and get it up and running, so I, I believe we're just extending that a couple...
It's all days. It's just, we just, months or whatever we gotta do to get it done.
Right. There's no, nothing new being granted. We're just giving him a couple more months.
Nothing about adjusting any of the money?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And Mike, I want you to explain the thing, the two different things you have with the cruising. You said something, you actually put a contract in place? You had, you had two different ones here on the cruising.
Item U is the new special event agreement. Item five U is a uniform, is the new special event agreement that they will sign. It takes the place of the MOU that had been done in previous years. And that's, it really just covers a lot of liability issues and so forth, and, and also it commits to the ten thousand dollars. So that's, and, and when we put U in, in effect, then we withdraw V is no longer needed. We will make the ten thousand dollar payment to Cruising the Coast during the first week of October in the new fiscal year.
Okay. I was gonna, I know you've been working on straightening all these things out, a lot of these special events. We're gonna do that with everybody? Finish to have some type of contract... Finish to have some type of contract with the city in place? Or anybody we dealing with that we giving money?
Yeah, this is just an extension of what we've been doing down in the harbor with the special event agreements for the various things held on city property down there. This, a great deal of that document is, is legal boilerplate having to do with liability coverage and so forth and so on, responsibilities of the parties. It's just a good practice to be, to have such an agreement. They gave us a, a document that we flipped around and, and put our own, all our own language in, and so now it's a more complete document. It covers everything that we, all the various liability issues, including COVID.
Well, yeah, but the last tournament they just had, that King Mackler tournament, 63 boats, a lot of boats, and I think we just did barricade, we didn't put up any money, we just helped them with some of the in-kind service. The one they just ran this weekend.
Right, and, and we did a special agreement for that tournament. And most important thing about, at that special event agreement is that commits us as a city to what's, what items and, and we're gonna provide to, to them. So it's not open-ended.
Okay, man, that's just good. I mean, you know, harbor is a good thing, to have these tournaments, it can bring a lot of people in town, help the city of Biloxi, help tourism. I just wonder, we getting ready with the harbor now, are we picking up all the pedestals?
When I, I looked this morning, we had two boats left in the harbors. One in each harbor. One is a sailboat that has no owner, and one is a boat that we're still trying to get hold of the guy to move his boat, so. Other than that, all the rest of the boats were moved, and everything's secured.
Do they have the authority to move a boat they left?
The, the boat that's, we, we do, we, I think, to tell you the truth, Councilman, I, I believe our harbor agreement that they signed says that we can move the boat if they don't move it. Right, one, one of those boats is a sailboat that's been there for some months now that has no owner, the owner's gone off and left it.
I just wonder, a boat left in the harbor, if it hits here bad, it'll tear, it'll tear a lot of them slips in there. That's gonna be a bad expense for us if we have, I mean, boats gotta go. If the, the Biloxi, the city of Biloxi has the authority to move, then they need to move it. Get it out of the harbor, 'cause all it's gonna do is cause damage. I mean, you seen plenty of things the other way, they just stack up on top of the piers, tears up the piers, tears up the pilons. It's not good to have one in there, that's for sure. Especially if you get a good, a good hit here with the surge and everything and the wind, it just tear the boat up if you have to pier. Be a lot of expense for us. So I don't know, I think we have to write something in there to make sure we can move it, what we have to do officially. What do you think, Robert? Somebody will just leave their boat, they won't move their boat. We have to have some kind of authority to get rid of boat, especially with hurricanes hitting. That's not good.
Let's, let's divert to council. If you would grab a microphone, Peter, please. I think we have to have, we have to follow the safety and welfare guidelines.
I mean, I think on the sailboat, we have that right. And the thing is, right now, we'd have to find, we'd have to trailer it and store it, and so I think the initial effort was just to try to locate the guy. I think one of the fellows had some past due rent, and he was under an eviction process right now, so we have the right to do these things. You know, this storm just kinda turned on us in about a, a two or three day window, so I'll get with Larry and see what we can do as far as maybe even trying to secure it or, or do something with it. Trying to secure it as best we can.
Yeah, protecting the harbor, you know, that's the key, protecting the harbor itself.
Yeah.
A lot of expensive boats can cause a lot of trouble.
We have the right, I mean, the fella that is behind on the rent, we're gonna probably be seizing his boat and, and selling it, or if, you know, that's, that's, we have authority to do that too, but, you know, we, we're not that nimble that we could do something like that on a two or three days' notice, so.
Thank you. And that might be it, Robert. No, that's, thank you.
Councilman Tisdale?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Glavine?
Nothing.
Councilman Guines? Councilman Barrett? I'll call for the question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand regarding the consent agenda. Motion carries unanimously. If there's any objections, please make me aware of those now. Ms. Lucy, I would like to state.
He's giving you his exceptions.
State my objection to O and S. Oscar and Sam, yes?
Q.
And Councilman Lawrence objects to Q. Do we have any other objections? There being none, we'll move to the code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel? No code enforcement hearings? We'll move to the routine agenda.
Move.
I have a motion by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Is anybody here? There he is. He didn't have a suit on, didn't recognize him. He didn't dress up like you did, Robert.
I don't have my Tuesday council suit on, y'all moved it on me. Should have one in the truck waiting. We're still in the works for the 1.39 million. We actually expected it, we expect it tomorrow, so I was hoping to give y'all some good news, but with the change in the council meeting, but it's coming, and it, like I said, it should be here by tomorrow.
All right, that's good. Anything else you got working on?
Not yet. We're, we're closing out the Hemp Hill construction project in Buendis West 1 and 2. Time has stopped on the project. We're processing the last of their pay applications, and we'll be closing out that project, and appears all is, all is well with that. And we anticipate on the next council agenda having the award for the next project, St. Michael's 1 and 2. That'll be a big one.
One, one question, this is from Felix and I. Oscar, when are they gonna be finished? Is that possible? When are they gonna actually finish the project?
They claimed they'll be complete in November, and I think they, as far as their work that they have to do, they'll make that timeframe. They've put a lot of crews on doing a lot of repairs. They still have some repairs to do, like at Brown and Division, they were gonna hire another subcontractor to do that, and he hasn't started yet. But they're going through, we've got extensive punch lists with, with them in various areas, so they're moving, they're making a lot of repairs. It's underground, so it's not maybe visible to all, you know, laypeople, but we, we see the effort going down, so.
Kinda wanted an update.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and before we leave, I'd like to see yourself, Peter, and the mayor for two minutes. Have a few questions afterwards.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Walt. Any other discussion on the routine agenda? It's moved by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Call for the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Point of order. Mr. President, if we could recess in memory of Curtis Harrison. Curtis served, Mr. Creel, Curtis served 25 years on the planning commission. He passed away several weeks ago, and I'd just like that to be considered by the council.
Cur, what was Curtis's last name?
Harrison.
All at once. Well, we definitely respect and appreciate his commitment to Biloxi. I will, uh, should we move to adjourn this month's meeting? I think that, I don't know if we, do we?
Yeah.
So I mean, should we, should we move this, should we add, should we do this at the end of the meeting, not recessing in his name, but adjourning in his name come the last meeting of the month? Will you do the resolution, so I wanted to defer to your? Okay, well.
Well, I'll move that.
So I have a motion by Paul Tisdale, seconded by.
I'll, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Lawrence make that motion, and we can all second it.
Okay, well, we'll move to recess today's meeting in the honor of Curtis Harrison. Thank you, George. Moved by George Lawrence, seconded by the council, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. We're adjourned. I know, we're recessed, excuse me.